Oh, no, what's happening?
All right, here we go. You folks, you want to flag salute, please?
Yes, sir.
We wish to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, everyone.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from yesterday's meeting and last week's.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Come in, Eric.
Morning, Eric.
Good morning.
All right. First, we got a completion permit from Dawn Garrett, 35th North of that old bridge up Next, it's time to submit our annual review for the solid waste management plan. I don't know if we need to make the motion over, but I need the chairman to sign and for Ashley to be able to attest to it. Blue is for you to sign, Jim.
Okay.
Pink is for her.
Do we have to update that book every five years, 10 years, five years? I couldn't remember, so, okay.
I make a motion to allow Chairman Harris to sign the solid waste management plan, no changes being made to the plan.
Second.
And then Ashley Sheldon will attest.
Chairman. Second.
All in favor? Aye.
It's your sales fire. All right. As you know, Mother Nature dealt us some good rain last week. So, uh...
Really?
We had some washouts, had to do some barricading, and water went down fairly quick. Did have a tree or two go down, so...
I mean, Andrew, did you think we got?
You know, I'm not for sure exactly.
We got three and three quarters. I did four. I heard four in our area.
Yeah, yeah, so...
Plenty.
Too much for what we already had, so...
It was saturated.
Right, so anyhow, we're back to blading roads and hauling gravel and fixing out our fixing up washouts and what have you.
Yeah, I had a challenge from one of our patrons on 145th Street, asked, told me to drive, drive from 54 North to Papa Road at 50 mile an hour and then see if I made it. I did this morning.
Did you make it?
I made it fine.
Okay, we'll look at it.
And I was in my Volkswagen.
Okay.
There you go.
Just to let you know, Keith Browning, Kansas Association of Counties engineer, replaced Norm Bowers. He will be here visiting with us today at 1:00. We're gonna go over pavement management plan and several other different items.
No Keith, sir.
Yeah, so wanted to get to know him a little better and what have you, and he's down in Pittsburgh this morning, so he's gonna swing by this afternoon, so just give you a heads up on that. We talked about the flooding. Next week, Dust and I will be going to the Kansas County Highway Association Spring Conference in Dodge City. We'll be gone, leaving Sunday, we back Wednesday, so...
We should need anything? Who should we call?
Chad Brown.
Okay.
So, we'll, uh, we'll let Chad know that.
Make him happy, won't he?
So...
I'll call you first.
Text, however, yeah.
Kind of like did the previous administration, call first, I don't care where you's at.
Yeah.
And he did.
Yeah, so, and that's fine, too, so...
Okay.
It's all, it's all good, and we'll get through it. Budget time, and I don't know on this one here, Elm Creek Lake, I don't know whether we wanna sit down, have a work session, talk what you guys, what your plans are, what you would like to see. I know the group is talking with Todd a little bit, they're supposed to be getting a plan together as well, but kinda not sure what thoughts are here, what everyone, I think we've had multiple discussions.
Justin, Justin has really kinda went out and looked at that, that area quite often and has a lot of pictures.
Yeah, I'm gonna meet with Susan hopefully this week sometime and start working on the RFPs, RFQs, so just to kinda see what might be out there. I did send some information about other states doing private partnerships, you know, with, like Illinois, state parks are doing it, Missouri state parks are doing it, and so nothing really changes, it's just a matter of trying to find out some additional funding mechanisms. We triple-checked, I mean, the, right now, the lake is making roughly $2,000 a year, and I know it costs a heck of a lot more than that, and some of the, I went out to the, looked at the properties again, and they're in dire, some of them are in dire need.
Absolutely.
But, and Eric informed me that they were charged $20 instead of 10, so, I mean, you got 100 people going out there on a annual basis using that lake, the lake shelter houses.
Right, and I, I mean, there's no control for who's using them when, we don't, I mean, it's all kind of like on our system and stuff like that, too, so I think I'll try to meet with Susan this week, if not next week, and we'll have something hopefully ready to put out by the end of May, that was our goal, so...
Eric, I would suggest if we receive requests for proposal for a joint venture, including that in our work session.
Yeah, if that's what we want, I mean, I don't know what we wanna do, I just...
I would like to see a work session.
Yeah, we need to do some planning out there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you guys might wanna take a field trip, all three, we go, same time, so you can talk about it, you know, in an open session and...
That may be...
We can have a work session right out there.
Yeah.
You're gonna, you're gonna take us over the dam and look at that second leak, are you?
No, I'll give you good direction.
I will give you video.
I've seen it twice.
I have a video for you, so that's, and that's another, that's another good discussion that we need to have, I mean, before we go doing very much, we need to make sure we get leaks stopped or figure out what we wanna do.
There are three leaks.
Yeah, so anyhow...
One of them's not easy to get to.
Yeah, yeah, so, okay. Also, just so everyone's on the same page, the crusher, new crusher will be delivered Wednesday around noon, and then they'll train Thursday, Friday, and then next week as well, so kinda let everybody know that. Windmill update, I did receive a call from Jeff Spangler yesterday, they're still working on seeding of the right of ways, we're kinda getting in the timeframe now, it's getting kinda late for that, so they know that what doesn't take, they will come back in the fall and reseed, so I just wanted to throw that out there in case you had anyone say anything about the seeding, the grass didn't come up or what have you, they are monitoring that, and if they need to come back, they will come back, so...
I noticed yesterday when I drove by there that almost everything's gone except for the reroute ties.
Yeah.
In the staging area.
Right, yes, they pretty well cleared, cleared it out, so, and that is all I have. Do you have anything for me?
There's a tomahawk, a bunch of flags, just had a person ask, you got any idea what they're, we're not doing anything as a crawl can or...
Tomahawk and...
The black top, east of the black top.
Are they white?
I don't know.
I know, I know the water district's been out there flagging a lot of stuff.
Okay, might be that, isn't it?
But they may be coming through for crawl can.
Maybe, yeah.
Seems to be, let me do some checking. You say east of the black top?
The ham and the black top. You don't talk about?
I'll find out on that. Anything else?
Keep an eye on Dustin, Dodge City, Kansas.
Might lose him, never know.
Never mind.
Yeah, yeah.
My speakers.
I lived out there for 10 years, I don't, that's a desert.
Yeah, yeah, so, all right. Ashley, you've got that sheet?
I do.
You'll give it to Jennifer, you'll take it or...
If we just make a copy and, you can copy it?
Yep, we can do that.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Learn something while you're out there.
I'll try.
Stay away from west coast.
Okay.
Yeah. All right, Clinton, Beth.
Make a motion, go on executive session, case 75, dash 43, 19B4, to discuss data relating to financial affairs or trade secrets. Of corporations, partnerships, trusts, and individual proprietorships, it would be the three commissioners only.
Commissioner Beth, you just have to give a little more information, like this is about the hospital or...
Um, it is about the hospital, but, I mean, I don't...
That's all you need to say?
Um, 10 minutes, I'll be back at 9:20.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Back here at 9:20.
You guys will need to go to my office.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Make a motion to resume normal session with action.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to move forward with a contract or with contract negotiations and with a contract via Christie Hospital to add specialists to our medical building on a month-to-month basis.
Second.
In discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anything else, Clinton? Justin?
Couple of updates. First off, I want to start out with a court request that was made by a patron last week. I want to commend Susan and Ashley for their due diligence with regards to it. Ashley, I talked to Ashley yesterday. She has got procedures in place that we didn't have before. We learned a couple of things about how claims are made with regards to the, you know, call it the institution or our, you know, county. So hopefully in the future, we won't have the same kind of problems that we had trying to get the information on that court request. It should have been really simple and it turned into a lot more work than we planned. So K-Cam got involved, the Kansas Association of Counties got involved, Susan spent way more time than need be and so did Ashley. So we're hoping that in the future, if that claim or that court request is ever made in the future, that we'll have better administrative procedures in place that will make that way easier than it was. Would that be a good? Yeah. Yeah. So really, really thankful for Ashley and Susan. They, we couldn't have really got it done without those two. So I talked to, just really quick update with the tax sale. The 2017 demand letters have gone out. I'll be getting the 18 today. So I just talked to Patty. There'll probably be around 200, 180 demand letters we'll send. I did talk to the title company yesterday. They're going to get the 2017s in queue. They have, we have a contract we need to sign. I'd like to give, I'd like the motion to give the chairman, excuse me, the ability to sign that contract if need be before, if it's here before the next meeting. It's the standard one. We've published in the past, we've asked for bids, but there's only one company that does it. And they're usually 85 a parcel.
Make a motion to allow Chairman Harris to sign the contract with title company for the tax sale?
Yeah.
Second.
And it's 2000, it'll be the 2017 and 18.
Seventeen and eighteen.
In discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
With the remainder of the 2016, I want to thank Rhonda Dunn, was at the land bank meeting last week. And there was a lot of discussion that happened with that regards to the land bank. We've delayed the sale just, just because there's, there's really good reasons. The land bank is working on their procedures and protocols to make it something that will be viable for years to come. You know, it is, there could be a funding problem and I could talk about that maybe at a later time. Maybe the county might want to help with that down the road, just because I think it'll save the taxpayers a lot of money in the end. So instead of having a sale every three years with the same parcels, the land bank will have control of those and hopefully get, give them to people that will pay their taxes and use them for something. So I haven't talked to Matt about this yet, but I'm hoping to have a conversation with him here soon about getting the parcels lined up and make a presentation to the land bank on June 13th at 5:00, 5:00 p.m. We'll go in and present those parcels to them and then hopefully after they make some decisions with regards to the specials that the city has on those properties, we'll try to get the sale, you know, into July, first part of August to get the 16s done and then during that time, we'll be working on the 17s. So.
I've been told the Pitt State instructor will be here the 23rd for our land bank.
Well, I think the, the person at Pitt State or Pittsburgh, Kansas was very, been very helpful on the front end of this, you know, three or four years ago. I think it might still be the same person, so.
Could be.
And it's working really well in Pittsburgh and I think they could work really well here too, especially, you know, on the front end, we're going to have a lot of parcels. I mean, I think that was one thing that was surprising to the people on the land bank. They're looking at 47 coming this sale and another 80 to 85 at the next sale. So that's almost 120 parcels in the next, this year, this, this coming year. So that was kind of an interesting number. So, and the specials were a lot. I mean, it was, there's parcels with 14, 15, $20,000 on them. So it's just, I think this, I think the land bank is a really good thing and we've been working on it for a long time. But I think it's coming really close to being done and so these sales can just start, they'll go really fast too, because what will happen is we'll ask anybody to pull the specials off the sale. Most, most people won't because of the, the price of them and then we'll sell those in 10 seconds and then move on to the ones that are outside the sale limits.
Yeah.
And the ones that are in the, outside the sale limits at the next sale, that number is 28.
Got caught up.
Well, the collections on the 2017, I talked to Patty yesterday. Their, the demand letters are doing their, what they're supposed to do. The collections are up. And then obviously the parcels that we originally started with the 17 have come way down. We're hoping the same way with 18. But like I told the land bank, by 19, those parcels that would have popped up again from 16 are going to be gone. And then by the time we do 2020 and 2023 or '24, the number should start going like this. And most likely, I mean, that's, that's what's going to happen is those parcels that have been problems for years and years and years will be controlled by the land bank.
How about our favorite? Hidden Valley Lake properties? Anything maybe we could approach?
I don't, I don't, I don't know.
I think they got a new, new manager out there.
They do. I don't really know how to fix that. I, that's going to be a problem for years.
The reason I brought it up, I had a patron that lives in that area that has been involved in it for quite a few years too. And he's ran in the same things that we've ran over the years that the way the covenant is built is just almost impossible to do anything.
Yeah. It's going to be really tough. And what, what's unfortunate about that is the taxpayers are spending, I mean, obviously the price to do business is going up. I mean, when we first started this, it was $55 a parcel. Now it's 85 just for the title company and do their work. I mean, on top of everything else, it's just, you know, $300 or $400 a parcel at the Hidden Valley and they sell for $50, $25 and they're back on the sale three years later. That's 800 bucks. Well, you take the $3 that's collected per year for that parcel and it takes you 45 years, 41 and something months to make your money back, so. But you have to do them. You can't be selective. And that's one of the things that puts a lot of pressure on the land bank. They can't pick and choose which ones go into the land bank. It's kind of all or nothing. And that's my humble opinion. I think that the people in Pittsburgh would probably say the same thing.
Yeah.
I'm hoping, I talked to Susan yesterday. We're hoping to work on some things out at the lake, kind of doing some processes for the RFQs or RFPs, so.
Just with Hidden Valley, just, I mean, we have no recourse through the state or anything.
Oh, I, you know, we talked about.
Because, I mean, they're, you know, they're, they're the ones that charge that.
$169 a year.
Fee and all of that and everything.
Patty and I actually talked about.
We're, we're stuck with it. Is this, I mean, is there anything the state would?
We talked about, Patty and I actually talked about going and testifying about having a minimum collection, you know, amount. So if, let's say it gets up to $100, I mean, I'm making up a number again, it's arbitrary, but let's say if you owe $100 or less, you don't have to have it in the tax sale. And so those parcels would stay dormant for, you know, 50 years almost, so.
And then the other thing is when, some of the conversations we had with them was, was we tried to, to get them to take over the, the parcels themselves, but that felt true. They didn't want to do that. But you know, to me, it would probably work out because they got to, some of them has to maintain those lots and the people that have those lots are not maintaining them.
I think the problem with the association is, is that they still, if, you know, there's hundreds and hundreds of lots.
Yes.
Thousands of lots. So let's say they, they take over 500 and they have to pay $3, $3 or $4 a year. They don't have the money to.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm not, I mean, it's just a bad deal all the way around.
Yeah, it's been a conundrum for.
Years.
Years.
Decades now at this point. I mean, it's been, yeah, getting older. It's been 15 years probably since I've been dealing with it, so.
Would it be anyway feasible, county just to take ownership, get it off the tax row and give it to, give it to folks like the land bank does?
I, I mean, I think there would be a lot of, there'd be a lot of due diligence that would need to be made. I mean, there, that's a big, I mean, that would be a big undertaking. I think there's some costs associated with them. I mean, I think the county does some road maintenance, maybe.
Well, if we took the, the lots that are on the tax sale, do we have to pay that association?
Probably, yeah.
Yes, that's what we found out.
The association is, yeah, the associations that, they're operating.
And then the other, the other one I, I kind of asked about, I said, well, why can't you just combine some of those lots and make a bigger lot? Can't do that either. You know, it's just amazing the way they, they wrote that covenant.
Yeah, the covenants on their association is, they're pretty ironclad and it's.
They can't change them?
Yes, takes all the people of the.
The entire, okay.
Yes.
That's not going to happen, no.
No.
I mean, what's interesting about, you know, Sugar Valley is doing, they're, they're able to break even. Hidden Valley, it's my understanding is that they're not. They have funding issues.
Well, they're a million dollar.
Yeah, and the lots are small.
Yeah.
Extremely small.
Yeah. Yeah, there really are. I think there was a house recently in Sugar Valley that did sell for seven figures, so.
Yeah.
Yep. So that's kind of an update on everything that's going on. So I'll try to go with Susan this week. If not, we'll do it next week and then I'll go with Matt, probably late this week or sometime next week to work on the land bank stuff. And he wasn't aware of that until right now, so.
Thank you, Justin.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Mr. Susan Bancroft.
Good morning. I need a executive session to discuss personal matters. There will be four different things that we'll discuss. Three Commissioners, Justin, myself. That should be it.
How long?
10 minutes.
10 minutes. Make a motion to go into executive session, case 754319B1, to discuss personal matters of individual non-lectured personnel to protect their privacy. Is that what you wanted?
Yeah.
Yeah. 10 minutes, be three Commissioners, Susan Bancroft and Justin Meeks.
And do we have to add performance or something?
Performance.
Performance, yes.
Performance.
And contracts, those two areas.
And contracts. We will return here at 9:42.
I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
There's a normal session at nine forty. Make a motion to resume our session at nine forty-two.
Take it.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to go into executive session, KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen B one to discuss personal matters of individual and I don't want the person to protect their privacy during the job performance. Be for fifteen minutes, we will return here at nine fifty-eight.
Take it.
On favor?
Oh, sorry, it'd be three commissioners, Susan Bancroft and Justin Meeks.
Take it.
Make a motion to resume normal session at nine fifty-eight with action.
Take it.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Make, you go ahead.
Uh, make a motion, we give our financial director, size HR director, permission to handle all HR-related employee issues.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 We also need a motion to make Mark in.
I'd make a motion to, to, um, to request or make Mark McCoy an interim.
Director.
Director, medical building director.
Mm-hmm. Take it.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Just a secondary part of that motion, a minute, and to give Susan discretion to negotiate any employment pay or anything of that nature.
I'd amend that a motion to allow Susan Bancroft to, Chief Finance Officer, to negotiate pay with Mr. McCoy.
Take it.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
That it, Susan?
Yes.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
How we coming on the sidewalk? Have you, you got any reports, updates?
Uh, we are getting it engineered right now.
Yep. Mr. Shane Walker.
The hospital building has to have a fire system inspection. Johnson Controls and Simplex is who does it. It's gonna be like twelve thousand dollars.
We don't have a choice, do we?
No. Not if we're gonna be in compliance.
We wanna be in compliance.
Yeah. And then the parking lot deal, Frank's coming this morning so we can finish that. So I've been talking to him about that. And then probably starting next week, we're gonna start redoing the website. Ashlyn, Courtney and I are gonna go through a bunch of it and make a bunch of changes and.
Good.
Add some stuff for different departments and take some stuff off that we're not needing anymore.
Okay. John, great. Anything from us, for us, you need anything? Okay, thank you. Public comment. Aye, aye? Okay. Elected officials' comment.
With the ju, with the announcement that was just made within Mrs. Bancroft having the permission in regards to HR personnel, can you explain in detail what HR involved with county employees because kind, it's kind of muddy area, kinda cloudy, when all the elected officials are responsible for their own employees? So, we need some clarification on that part. Now, I understand benefits in regards to health insurance, stuff like that, but the overall operation of the elected office needs a little bit more clarification as to what's taking place.
You know, I need to get some clarification through Susan, through Sheriff Martin's legal counsel. I mean, I'm uncomfortable ethically answering any questions for the sheriff with regards to any legal questions because he is represented by counsel. So, I'm not real sure how that'll go. I need to get basically a waiver from his attorney saying I can talk to him and answer questions.
Okay.
So.
So for clarification with the comment that was just made, I technically do not have legal counsel.
Well, if he doesn't, I can answer the question.
So, this was just seeking advice of some issues that has come up, they're willing to assist in that.
So, he basically said he doesn't have legal counsel, so I can answer the question. So, when it comes to HR issues with his office specifically, Susan wouldn't have any authority over that. I guess the clarification of the motion should have been employees that are directly supervised and monitored by the commission, which would be Road and Bridge, you know, Matt, Matt's office, things like that, people that are non-elected. I mean, hopefully, elected officials will use Susan as a resource to help with HR issues. I mean, I know that that, that's happened in the past, when I was doing stuff like that, they would come and ask questions and get a better understanding of maybe what was occurring, they could still make their own decisions, but it's always good to get a second or a third or fourth opinion when it comes to HR issues.
Do we need to amend that motion?
You know, it's a lot of things we have to do, like insurance-related or things like that.
I think, I think we found this out too. This is where Ashley comes back in for some administrative issues. We never really had a form that dealt with workers' comp or a claim. So, you know, obviously, Ashley as an elected official can tell the other elected officials, you have to fill this form out because I need to know what's going on with, you know, blown-out tire, or hitting a deer, or a dump truck catching on fire, you know, a slip and fall, anything of that nature, it's gotta flow through Ashley's office. I mean, that's what K-Camp wants, they don't want, you know, multiple people contacting them about claims. And so, even if an elected official wants to monitor what's happening with that claim, Ashley as the elected official in her job function statutorily needs to know what's going on. And that kind of is what happened with this last court request, is we were trying to, we thought we had a process in place, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, we thought we had a process in place and we found out that it wasn't there. And then in the past, it was just handwritten note, and we didn't, and those handwritten notes are actually possibly core rediscoverables, we'd rather have something in writing that's more formal that allows for the court request to happen more quickly, because we, it shouldn't have taken as long as it did, but we didn't have the procedure in place. So, that's a good example of things that we have found out through the systems to, that are gonna hopefully improve.
And it's come a long way because before Ashley and Susan, uh, there was basically two people handling the court request, and mostly you.
Right. No, I, I, it's night and day difference, and I'm not saying it's bad or good, I'm just saying there's a big difference between how it was done before and how it is now, and so.
So, we got, you know, we finally got a procedure.
And Susan's helped with that too, that's what I made the comments that I made, because we're, we're learning the processes that, just are best practice, and they're not wrong or right, it's just the best practice part of it. And so, when it comes to employment matters, we're trying to create best practice to allow the flow of information to come to the commissioners and not, you know, what we, I hate, I hate executive sessions, where we have to talk about people that are identifiable in executive sessions, and hopefully we can limit those by having the processes that Susan or Ashley can have in place to have it more internal and, you know, get it done without going in executive session for a half hour.
I agree.
And we're still gonna have to go in executive session to discuss personal matters, but we're not going in to talk about elected official or their employees, or dealing with employees that the commissioners have direct.
Control of, control of, right. Okay, just, that's, I'm glad that you cleared that up because that's been a discussion, uh, among several people from going into executive session about, uh, non-elected personnel, that's kind of a broad scope, because people in my office are non-elected personnel, people in Ashley's office is non-elected personnel. So, that kind of created a confusion about who was being, being discussed or talked about. Now, it is a standing order with my office and my personnel that no county official actually talks to them unless I'm present or they get permission from me. That's just knowledge. I'm gonna back up a few steps in regards to some comments that was made, in regards to K-Camp and some other things in regards to, let's say, workman's comp issues and stuff. In the past, we've had no issues whatsoever when it comes to K-Camp, let's say, for motor vehicle accident stuff. I have access to the K-Camp membership page where we fill out our accident reports, submit the accident reports, and start the process, because nine times out of ten, they're gonna come back to me, not Ashley, well, what happened? We need more detail. And so, I set that, where I open that dialogue. Now, everything's for, because Ashley has access to the K-Camp information that's being obtained. Same thing with the workman's comp situation. Example, had a deputy several years ago get involved in a foot chase, fell, twisted his ankle, I think he cut his hand, several medical issues, had to go to, had to go to the doctor, get it corrected and get it fixed. I follow that claim through, you know, All-Star or whatever that company is, and work with them on a day-to-day basis, because they're the ones that's coming to me to ask me the questions in regards to what the deputy has done, in regards to them providing that information, instead of going through four different people just to come back to ask me. So, the system has been working very, very fluently, there hasn't really been any issues, and there's always been questions where if there's any questions, it can go through the clerk's office who has the records in regards to what's taking place.
Well, I think, I think the step, you know.
I was just gonna clarify, so with K-Camp, it's through Origami Risk Website, so I'm the only one that has the actual login and has the dashboard, so I monitor all that. He can go on and make a claim, it shows up anonymous, I mean, it tells you if I did it or someone else did it, but if someone else makes a claim, it does show up in that dashboard.
In that, you know, identification.
I think that's where you were at, that, oh, we weren't asking for her to handle it, just to be informed.
Well, I think, I think the best, best practice is, and sheriff's right on point, what I'm, what I'm saying is that what we, what we found out in this last court request is that there was, we had to make a phone call to get the information that we should have had, Ashley should have just had. I mean, if, if the sheriff wants to make one more little minor step and say, hey, Ashley, I just made a claim, you know, here's the form, fill it out real quick for us so we have it for our records, because that, we had to like do a bunch of follow-up and call a bunch of people to find out what claims have been made. I mean, like, a blown-out tire was super easy, but we didn't know if there was any workers' comp claims, any, you know, there's, the question was, what active ongoing claims do you have within the county? I'm paraphrasing, I'm, that's not the exact, but we had to make some phone calls, we had to do some things, emails were sent. And so, I think just to stop that, the next thing, the easy part would be if an elected official has a claim, to just let Ashley know as elected official, okay, I just made this claim, I know the dashboard's there, but anything that.
I'll load a login and.
Right. Yeah.
I think, I think you had the same thing, you, you worked with K-Camp, but you also called the clerk.
Our first job was the clerk, yeah.
So, I'm just asking, I mean, we can't make an elected official do anything, I just think that, and the procedures that have worked in the past were good, but we just had an example, like, just happened this week, that we had a really simple question that turned into a way bigger deal than it should have been, in my humble opinion. I don't know if Susan and Ashley will agree with me on that, but we had multiple people giving us emails and legal advice, and it's just, to me, it should have been that fast, and I told Susan that, we spent way, way more time than we should have on it. Now, that's my.
Did we make the timeline?
Oh, we, we, the, the person that made that request asked for a. Oh, we, we, the, the person that made that request asked for only $25, and that's what we're charging, and we spent way more time than $25. I mean, we, because we actually learned that we had a procedural issue.
Right.
I learned a lot during this.
Yeah. So that's, that's my point, just if we can, best practice is, is not what the law says. You can do whatever you want, but just so we can have a running list.
Say that again now?
Best practice is not the law. I mean, you can do, as an elected official, he can make whatever claim he wants, do what he wants. And that's, and I'm not saying that's bad or good or anything, it's just the best practices would be to be able to, you know, the sort of the.
The best practice is not the law?
No. No, the best practices is not, well, I mean, it can be the law, but best practices is obviously not what, you know, best practices is not what your.
Best practice would be letting, what he's saying is the best practice would be letting Ashley know then she has documentation of it.
Right.
Instead of having it look.
But the law, the law is not, that's not the law. But the law is that if you wanna make that claim yourself.
You don't have to do it.
You would do that, you don't have to let Ashley know, but best practices would be letting Ashley know so that we don't have to.
Spend hours looking for stuff.
Like I said, just for clarification in regards to the K-Camp side and having access to that, it's all identified by the offices themselves who filed that claim. And nine times out of 10, it's gonna be, of course, me and me filling it.
When I see that, it does not say that.
Really?
It shows anonymous.
Interesting, because I have to put my name on it, so I'm signing my name away.
When I look into the claim, then I can obviously tell it's your department, but if I just pull it up, it just says anonymous.
Yeah, we don't know, we don't know the employee, we don't, there's a lot of things. From my understanding, this last, how this process, there's a lot of information that you don't know if you're not told it, right?
Because when you submit a claim, I can see it in there, but I can't, even when I submit a claim, because the last one I submitted, I can see it's open, but I know what's in it because I submitted it, I can't open it, I can't see anything through the dashboard, it allows me no further information.
So we don't know if the claim's still active, we don't know if there's active ongoing legal problems, if there's active ongoing case review, we have, we have no idea. And that's what happened to us, is we didn't know.
I can see that if claim was submitted, I can see if it was like a liability claim or what type, and that's really, then I have to contact K-Camp to get the rest of that information.
Just for the record, and you can make the note, any forms that are, reports that are completed through the sheriff's office is through me. I'm the one who actually completes that, those reports.
I see that.
And we go from there, nobody else. So just for the record, documentation, if you see a form that says anonymous, anonymous equals Bill Martin, Sheriff of Rapid County, okay? Just through K-Camp only, nothing else. Just need to clarify.
Is that, is that best practice or the law?
Any other elected official comment? Anyone out there? Nope. Moving right along, commission comment?
Don't have anything.
We are expecting a feasibility study next week.
Good.
That is an evening meeting, is everybody good with that?
Oh.
Six o'clock, do we need to change that?
We're at, it is here, and we may have to call and.
Do it nine o'clock? Will we just keep it at our normal time?
Well, I can call, I can call them and see if they can come in the evening.
Well, because the 24th, we're also gonna have an evening meeting at Garland if everybody approves of it, so maybe we should have regular meeting next week. I don't care.
Just let me know, because I need to make, I've got one presentation for budget.
Tell me when, I'll be there.
Yeah, so, which, which, something that we're gonna have to talk about, because this is going to be such a large item, and I know you said something about $25 for a core request or whatever. I mean, if people, I mean, I already know three or four people that's gonna core request this study, and that thing is going to be, you know, it's potentially 600 pages long. Can we charge?
Yeah, we can charge.
If they wanna pay for copy, it's 35 cents a page.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I wanna, I wanna actually, because this actually come back to haunt Ashley a little bit too, and myself from a comment that I made, you know, and obviously words are important, but the reason we didn't charge what we actually spent time on task on the core requests is, is we found out we had some internal procedures that we needed to fix. And so we didn't charge what we actually spent because.
Shouldn't have taken that long.
Yeah, it shouldn't have taken that long, so.
So like this, when you give this to me, I'm not gonna have to go research it, it's gonna be right there, so they can get an electronic copy too and save that, so it may.
Well, I mean, you know, it could be put on a flash drive, but that flash drive costs us money.
Right.
Put it on our website.
Yeah, in the PDF or something.
Yeah, we, we did that, we've done that with other legal documents, we put it on the, the website and people could print it off as they want. I think that's probably the best way to do it.
Is there, okay.
As long, you know, we haven't got, and just, this is a lawyer in me, we haven't got to look at that report yet, I think there could be some proprietary information in there that we need to.
So that was my, yeah, and this is not, I guess this isn't really part of my comment, but we don't have to release that that day, do we?
Well, we, we need to, we get some time to review it, 600 pages is gonna take a little bit, so, I mean, obviously within a timeframe, but we can redact confidential information that has direct impact on some, you know, whatever, I mean, there's parts of the law that allow for non-discoverable during cora.
Okay.
So we don't know what that is yet because I haven't seen the report.
Right, right.
Right. I mean, demographic information, you know, how much someone's charging for something probably is gonna be core discoverable, but, you know, percentages, returns, all that stuff is probably, could be considered proprietary.
The meeting on the 17th right now could possibly be Tiger Regional Baseball. I can be here that morning, but I'm a maybe that evening, so, but you guys can have the meeting without me, of course. But I was told late yesterday that Regional might be moved to Tuesday, so Monday.
Boo.
It would be for you too.
And it'd be probably for me.
So I would recommend the 17th be a Monday, a morning meeting, and then we want time to look at this document, we could have a couple hour work.
We should get, we should, we, are they gonna give us a copy priority so we could at least have a little bit of time to review it, or we're gonna just be in the meeting and review it then?
I don't know that the, the copy's actually even ready today.
Ah.
So, I mean.
It'd be nice to have at least a day.
It may be, it may not be ready, fully ready until Monday.
Day for review.
So, but, but then they're just going to give a presentation and then we will have it to review, and it sounds like we can legally review it without releasing it for a while, so.
We certainly want just a review, make sure we don't release anything we're not supposed to legally.
Well, I, I mean, a lot of that information, I'm making a lot of assumptions, but a lot of that information is gonna be probably demographic, population, movement of people getting healthcare, things like that, which I don't think are, like, the actual billable, you know, things like that could be proprietary. I don't, I can't envision a lot of it being proprietary, and we want the information out anyway. So, I mean, it's, I'll go through it as quick as I can, or I'll talk to the, if they have an attorney, I'll talk to their attorney and see what they think might be proprietary. But I can, it's gonna be pretty hard to come up on a way with it is, is proprietary because it's a report.
Well, the, the other side of it's gonna be a lot of, there's gonna, I mean, potentially a lot of information in there to digest, and it's gonna take more than a few days.
Right, I understand. I just, I know people probably want it quickly, but.
It's gonna take, I mean, that many pages and with the type of information that potentially in there, the healthcare-related stuff.
Right.
I mean, you're talking a month to get through it.
Right. Okay. We'll try to get through as fast as we can, you know. I mean, I think chapters of it will be pretty easy to say, look, this chapter here is about population masks, we can just, you know, that's, that's open, that's core discoverable. This one's about, you know, the facility out there and what it looks like and how much it's gonna cost to fix. You know, some of those, we already kind of have a feeling, we just don't know the exact number. And that's gonna be really easy to get to the public quickly too. And Chairman, you were speaking up the sidewalk, they're actually out there, I think, walking it right now, just.
We need a video of that.
They're certainly, they're in, encircling the building. So we need, do we need a motion move that back to morning meeting next week, or?
Work for me, yeah.
Yeah. We need a motion move it back to.
Well, if you're gonna move it back to the day, I would, there's another motion, just to clarify, after our discussion with Susan, just to deal with non-elected personnel. But make, make sure that the elected, you know, the elected officers are.
They report to us.
They report. Yeah, Susan, you know, however you wanna clarify that, but elected officials aren't gonna have, they're not gonna have their employees, unless there's a complaint, they can go to Susan.
And that probably means her negotiating contract, but we still approve the contract.
Oh, absolutely, you can't. Susan can't sign a contract.
But she does a good job negotiating, I don't mean that.
Right, what I'm saying is like any HR, I guess to clarify the motion that you guys made to make sure it's to the people that are, the departments that are controlled by the commission, not the elected officials.
Not elected officials, yeah.
So you might wanna make that motion, just to clarify.
There's none.
I'd make a motion to give Susan Bancroft the authority to, as an HR director, to, to handle all HR and employment matters of the employees that, that report to the commission.
Can you put in that motion that if the elected officials want to use me?
I can do that, and, and, I'll, I'll do that.
Because I have a relationship with everyone, I mean, Patty's office works with me, the register of deeds, and they print, they all want.
You have that motion for that, because if we say you can.
Yeah, and with the elected official departments that, that so wish to use HR director's services.
You know, this, I'm, we're having, we haven't had one of these in a while, but this, it's bringing up a kind of a floodgate of things that we need to probably talk about too, because there possibly could be complaints against the elected official, I'm just saying hypothetically that could happen, and so we need to have a procedure in place that if there's a complaint against an elected official, that it goes to the HR person. I mean, because we gotta have that protection under the EEOC and under the guidelines, you want somebody to be able to make a complaint, and if they can't, it causes huge problems. I mean.
And this would be a question for Susan, you both, are we 24 months away from having a good updated handbook, 12 months, or any guess?
I think we're 12 months away.
Okay.
That's, that's what I thought, so.
Yeah, they're, they're working on it as a team.
Better than the eight years.
Yeah, yeah. No, I'm glad that that's finally moving forward.
Yeah. Well, that gives Susan the tools she need to move forward with some of her decisions that's in the handbook, so.
Well, second, Lynn's motion.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. My comment would be that I do have the community building in Garland reserved for May the 24th at 6:00 PM if we wanna hold an evening meeting in Garland.
24th?
On Tuesday, yeah. But I can.
Tuesday night. Hmm. That, that's ringing the bell, man.
Well, that's why I'm asking, we can get it moved, I hope, so.
I'll, I'll make it work.
Okay, Clifton, maybe?
Yeah, as far as I know. I also make a motion on the 17th, our meeting will be held at 9:00 at normal time here in the commission instead of that evening.
And a Garland meeting on the 24th at 6:00 PM.
And add the Garland meeting, or the 24th, the following week for Garland at 6:00 PM at the community building.
Yeah.
Aye.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Ashley, anything? I looked at you twice.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Aye.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Clifton.